There's going to be a bit of a repeat for those of you who were here before. If you're watching this on replay, hey, go back and watch the first one. This is the second. We're going to be hearing from candidates running for mayor and also at-large. Similar to the first session, I have a very elaborate system with these note cards to make sure that we get everyone a chance to either go first or second and mix up that order a little bit. Going to ask an opening question that I gave a heads-up that I'm going to ask. And we're going to start off with Mary Kay Booze-Water, who is running for mayor. Next person after that will be Richard Beard. All right. Opening question is, why have you chosen to run for this office? If elected, what would you like to accomplish in your first 100 days?
I'm running for the mayorship of Greensboro, North Carolina, because I absolutely think Greensboro is the best city in the nation, number one. Number two, I know that we are going to have three or four new council members on our city council, and I believe that I am the one who should be guiding them. I have had the institutional knowledge that I have absorbed over the last 14 years, innovative solutions that we have tried and true. And I do a lot of regional work. I'm chair of several regional boards, elected by elected officials all over 10, 12 counties. So I believe that I am the one to lead this new council. In my first 100 days, I certainly want to sit down with each and every council member and see what their goals are. I know we hear a lot of that in forums, but by the end of the forums, everyone kind of starts sounding alike. So it's really interesting on one-on-one when you sit down with someone. I've spoken to most of the candidates one-on-one and have an idea already of what they would like to see done in our city. Many of them have passions for very certain things. I know youth violence. We've done a lot on safety. We've done a lot on fire. We've done a lot on GM 911. Housing is a huge issue. And keeping the momentum going, we are in the trajectory of success that this city has not seen in many, many years. One reason are our logistics, our urban loop, so many of the things that have been approved and finished over the last several years. And we are certainly poised to continue that trajectory of success. I am approachable, I am accessible, and I can devote full time to this position. I would like to be your mayor.
All right. Thank you. Richard Beard, who will be followed by Irving Allen.
Yes, thank you. I'm a native of Greensboro. It'll be soon, in November, it'll be 64 years that I've lived here. But I decided to move away. I was in a family business, moved to Roanoke, Virginia for 10 years, got into economic development, but always had a desire to come back to Greensboro and had the fortunate opportunity to work for the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development in 1996 to 99. Fast forward to today, economic development is at an all-time high, and we're seeing promise and opportunity in Greensboro greater than any in my lifetime. So why am I running? Because of this economic development boom, 20,000 jobs coming to the area, the best outlook in my life, and we've got to prepare for it. And I'm committed to be a part of that. So the first 100 days, I certainly want to learn more about how and where the money's spent. $831 million, $211 million increase over the last five years. We need to prioritize better with how we spend our money. I definitely want to see an increase in traffic patrol throughout Greensboro. But one thing I've learned from this campaign, what I really want to do is start collaborating as a community and bring this community together. We're so polarized, and I'm an unaffiliated candidate in this race. It's a nonpartisan race, and this is a very, very partisan race. And we've got a lot of opportunity, a lot of promise, and we can only capitalize on this if we come together. And I certainly want to be at the lead in beginning these conversations, some of them that are going to be difficult, but we need to have them, and we need to come to the middle, and we need to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. One thing I forgot to mention earlier, Diane Bellamy Small does have a seat up here. She was here earlier, and I believe she had to depart. So Mr. Allen, followed by Hugh Holston.
Thank you. So I'm Irving Allen. I'm a community organizer who was raised here in Greensboro, North Carolina. I've also raised my family here. And I decided to run, one, because community came to me and asked me to run, because I've been doing the work in the community for several years, over 14 years of organizing work, working on several issues that span from across the city. And I believe in this city. So I do think that I have the particular talents and skills to bring people together. I've worked in the nonprofit sector. I've worked in the business sector. I've worked in the community, as a community advocate. So I've spanned the gambit of where community happens. And I want to bring folks from their silos together to work together so that we can solve the tough issues and the easy issues that we need to solve in Greensboro, because some of the things are going to be easy. There are simple decisions that need to be made, but some of the harder decisions are going to take relationship building. It's going to take us trusting each other. And the only way for us to do that is to come closer to each other, to get to know one another a little bit more personally. And that's what I've done for the last 14 years, is bring folks together in community, build sometimes odd coalitions to get things done, because I believe in working for people, being a servant leader, and that's what I want to bring to council.
All right. Thank you. Next, Hugh Holston, followed by Jamila Pender.
Good afternoon. I am Hugh Holston, and I am not actually a native of Greensboro, but I married up into Greensboro very happily. I have a passion for Greensboro. I truly believe in Greensboro. I believe that Greensboro is on the cusp of greatness. My background, as you know, I am currently a city council member at-large. I was appointed in '21. I ran for the seat in '22 and was elected by you to serve as one of your three at-large members, and now I'm running for reelection. I'm running for reelection because of that very same momentum. Look at economic development. We have brought in over $20 billion in new capital investment. We've announced over 23,000 new jobs, and we have saved over 1,100 jobs for our community. But we can't rest on our laurels. While experience matters, we cannot be complacent. We must continue to keep the pedal on the metal. And with that experience, I'm very happy to assist my fellow council members as we continue to drive for the residents of Greensboro as we look for success for the future. What I want to achieve in the first 100 days, in this last budget, one of my pet projects was, it's a pilot project. It's a beautification day labor program. We talk about economic development. We talk about putting money in the pockets of those who need funding. Well, that project, in combination with the Hope Center and Scott Jones team, is going to be able to put some money in the pockets of those who are unhoused, give them some skills, give them some wraparound services, and then turn them loose in our society, in our city, so that we all can be better, those residents, and also the beautification for the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, Jamila Pender, followed by Robbie Perkins. And again, the question is, why have you chosen to run for this office? If elected, what would you like to accomplish in your first 100 days in office?
I chose Jamila Pender. I chose to run for city council because of the work that I've done over the past 20 years. I like to tinker and figure out how things kind of come together. And so over my past 20 years, where I've worked closely and intimately in community, with community, and for community, most deeply in creating access to care, has really led me to what happens when people come to hospitals, your doctor's offices, what causes them to have diabetes, hypertension, mental health issues, and said, started going deeper and saying, okay, what are those things that are contributing to that? And so as I started to go deeper and looking at what contributes to that, it's the environment. And so it's the environment where they live, where they work, where they connect, and wanted to be able to contribute to making those conditions better for other people. And so that was the reason why I chose to put my name in the hat when the appointment came up in January, when I was appointed to this position, and want to continue in that same vein, where I'm taking the expertise and the knowledge that I have for opening up, managing, establishing, and leading many of the things that I have done in my role at Code Health, but also the work that I've done personally in the community with my personal engagements, such as working, volunteering at the Women's Resource Center, or sitting on the boards for some of our food networks in the community. And so my expertise and reasons for wanting to do that is making me want to continue in this vein of running for office. In the next 100 days, I have been on council for eight months. So one thing I do know is what I would do differently going into this now is working with some of the departments and fully understanding, continuing to build a relationship with the other members that are newly elected to council, because it is a lot when you come into something and you think you know, but when you get in, it's totally different. So continue to build and foster relationships, but continue in some of the work I'm doing with our corridor projects in the city, want to be able to see those continue.
All right. Robbie Perkins, followed by Denise Roth.
Thank you. I'm Robbie Perkins, and I'm running for mayor of the city of Greensboro. I'm running for mayor because I'm a leader who knows how to bring people together and to get things done. I moved here in 1979 after graduating from Duke University with an undergrad degree in history and religion and an MBA, and immediately, this became home to me. I didn't know anybody when I moved here, but I know a lot of people now. I served 16 years on the city council and two years as mayor. When I left office as mayor in 2013, I say that the only elected office that I would ever serve in again was mayor of the city of Greensboro. And I never thought I'd have the opportunity to do that. But I do, and I'm here, and I want to be your mayor. I am a leader. Things in this town that I have led, the Tanger Center, Greensboro Aquatic Center, Scenic Corner Overlay District, $200 million of affordable housing in East Greensboro from 1995 to 2004. Coming up with a plan to take the Civil Rights Museum, the International Civil Rights Museum, and pay its debt service so that the New Market Tracks credits would be fully paid on time, and that debt would go from 26 million to zero. I have been a leader. You need a leader to take this city to the next level, and I can do that. I've been the mayor before. What would I do in the first 100 days? I would go to all the council members, not in the first 100 days, but on November 5th, and say, what do we want to do together? What's the low-hanging fruit? I'd go to the manager at lunchtime, say, manager, we're going to give you a plan inside of a week so that you can tell us how you're going to deliver on that plan in our first meeting. I would also know that the budget of the city of Greensboro starts in December. It doesn't start in June, and I'd get work on it in December so we could narrow that budget down by June 30th.
All right. Thank you. Denise Roth.
Thank you, and it's good to be here. I'm Denise Roth, and I'm running for Greensboro City Council at-large. And I'm running because I have truly enjoyed working in Greensboro, living in Greensboro, and Greensboro has given a great deal to me and my family. Greensboro is on the moment of great transition and precipice and opportunity, and I believe with my experience both here locally and nationally, I will be well-positioned to help in the next stages. Previously, I served as city manager of Greensboro, and I was in the manager's office from 2008 to 2014, as city manager from 2011 to 2014. Prior to that, I served at the Chamber, supporting, raising funding for the establishment of the Joint School of Nanoscience and Nanoengineering, a joint program between Greensboro, UNC Greensboro, as well as North Carolina A&amp;T, which continues to thrive and produces PhDs. I also had an opportunity to work prior to that in the community across the board as I served with Congress and Brad Miller. Since I left Greensboro, I left Greensboro in 2014, but only to serve with President Barack Obama, leading the General Services Administration. And through that work, I've also gone on to work with cities across the country as they have gone through transition and transformation in investment as, in large projects, as well as infrastructure investment. I share all that to say that I see the moment that Greensboro's at. I understand also the origins of Greensboro and the strength that we have, and look forward to bringing forward my experience and network to support. Very simple, in terms of the first 100 days, I would work with my colleagues to establish a strategic plan for execution. At the end of the day, we have a number of plans on deck. We know what this city needs to be strong. We need to bring those efforts together and have a strategic direction for each part of Greensboro that is going to make us successful with the work that we need to do. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. Hey, Juan, since you're up here, by the way, thanks, UNCG, for hosting us. Juan, to help me select the next question, totally unplanned, everyone, can you please select one of these cards? And then tell me what it is. That would be question number one. All right. So in my grab-bag category here, as a member of the city council, what would you do to encourage? Oh, by the way, thank you, Juan. Everyone, give him a round of applause. All right. So, as a member of the city council, what would you do to encourage economic growth in Greensboro? Again, as a member of the city council, what would you do to encourage economic growth in Greensboro? I've decided we're going to hear from our mayoral candidates first, and the first one we're going to hear from is Robbie Perkins.
There you go. Thank you. You know, the mayor is the chairperson of the Board of Directors, and the Board of Directors is the city council. And if you're the chair of the board and you're the mayor of a city, your number-one focus when you wake up every single morning is, how do I do something positive in our city? And the economic development piece is the generator. I would be the chief salesperson for this city. Now, do I know how to do that? Sure I do. I've been mayor before. We've gone after big deals. We've made big deals. I do it in my business for 46 years, been involved with the Public Distribution Center, News and Record Property, other major deals around Greensboro. I know how to sell this town. I also now know how to work with regional leaders across the triad in order to make things happen. You know, the district forum talked about the regional need for sewer system. Well, who's going to make those deals? Who's going out to talk to the people about how we're going to put a $3 billion regional sewer and water system together by the year 2050? And we're going to have to do it faster as opposed to slower. We can't slow down on our infrastructure. And you need a leader that can meet with corporations, that can go toe-to-toe in the negotiations with Brent Christensen and his team, that understands water and sewer, understands roads, understands the airport, understands our regional partners, and I can do that. I am a leader. I'm not here to be a fifth vote. I'm here to push and pull and wrangle and negotiate and ask and plead with our city council to get five votes to make good things happen for Greensboro, and I'm willing to do it.
All right. Thank you. Mary Kay Booze-Water.
Yes, I think that we need to keep this trajectory of success going. I don't hear anyone complaining or criticizing it. And in order to do that, we need to look ahead. Now, as chair of several regional boards, I am a board member and a chair of the Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation. I am chair of the Municipal Planning Organization, which is the Transportation Advisory Committee. I work with state officials. I work with regional officials. I work with county officials. And for some reason, they keep electing me every single year. I've been chair for six, seven years on most of these boards. I am currently vice chair of the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, formerly the COG. So working with all of our teams, all of our collaborators, all of the people that we do, Carolina Core, oh my goodness, Chamber of Commerce, NC DOT, the state, everyone, I do have those qualities, and I am willing and ready to push them forward. When you're not the mayor, you don't need to upstage the mayor. And that is what your priority is when you are a council member or an at-large member or mayor pro tem. But I have the ability. I've done the research. I am boots on the ground in all of those areas. I have certainly been absolutely thrilled that my committee is one of the last ones to approve the last leg of the urban loop. Look how much that has opened up for Greensboro, the logistics, the companies that are coming because we have the roads and the transportation needs. Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation, we are working on van pools to Toyota. We are already doing van pools to GilDan. We are working with all of these areas, all of these counties, and I work well with the elected officials and with the corporations.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to hear from Hugh Holston, followed by Richard Beard. Again, the question is, as a member of the city council, what would you do to encourage economic growth in Greensboro?
Yes, my three pillars, my three priorities for this campaign are economic development, public safety, and housing, with economic development being first. It's important that we invest in our infrastructure. I know that can sometimes be somewhat boring and dull, you know, water and sewer and those types of things, but those things are the heartbeat of the community. That's what we need. If you don't have water and sewer, then we really don't have the ability to develop and to grow. And businesses coming in are going to require that. We need to have a business-friendly environment. That is, within the city offices, we need to make sure that we're making business as easy as it possibly can be. And also, we need to have a judicious use of our financial incentives to attract those same businesses coming in. We need to attract large and small businesses. We do a great job with our Chamber of Commerce, bringing in large businesses, and we now have the opportunity to look at the smaller businesses, the entrepreneurship. And right now, we have a very unique perspective in Greensboro with as many colleges that we have, and we have the students around. Many of those students leave our community after graduation. We have the opportunity to create entrepreneurships, incubators, to keep them here, and to have them to grow their families and to live, work, and play in our community. And then finally, we also need to make sure that we keep our partnerships and collaborations strongly intact, whether it's the county commissioners, the Chamber of Commerce, or our state legislators. Those four bullets are going to help us with economic development and growth and to continue the economic boom that we're having in Greensboro.
All right. Thank you. Next, Richard Beard, followed by Jamila Pender.
I wish I had 10 minutes to talk about this. You've heard about my background in the Greensboro Chamber and economic development, but I've made a career on economic development, and I understand what Brent and Marvin and others go through when it comes to recruiting businesses and industry. I've had the pleasure of being both on the public sector side of it when I worked at the Chamber, but took my public sector to the private sector. So I've been in the room with the CEOs. I understand how they make these decisions. I've represented companies like LabCorp and Peloton, Old Dominion Freight Line, Corvo. It was RF Micro Devices when I worked with them. So I know what they're looking for. I know how to work with these companies. I've also made a career at Rock Creek Center from 2006 until I decided to go work for the Greensboro, I mean, Greensboro Sports Foundation, which is also economic development, but was involved in creating a billion dollars worth of tax base at Rock Creek and over 5,000 jobs. You know, infrastructure is definitely key in continuing to work on our infrastructure, whether it's roads, water, sewer, you know, parks and recreation, that's part of our infrastructure, it's live, work, play. I also hear a lot of people around town that say, yeah, well, you know, jet zero and these jobs are great, but they're manufacturing jobs where they're really high-paying and there are a lot of high-skill jobs within these jobs that we're creating. But people want to see headquarters. They want to see more white-collar jobs. That's going to require our core, our downtown, to be vibrant. It's got to be a place where they can live, where they can live, work, and play. Once again, that keeps coming up. So vibrancy in the community, making sure that we have all the tools and that our city's on the trajectory to be able to recruit more opportunities, but also to continue working with our workforce development and making sure that our workforce is prepared, and start talking to the kids in elementary school so they can start planning 10, 15, 20 years down the road when we're really going to need them.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, Jamila Pender, followed by Denise Roth.
I would focus on healthy people, healthy communities, because we can have all the jobs, but if we do not have healthy people to be able to be placed in those jobs and then to maintain those jobs, so looking at how we can partner more with our healthcare industry to make sure, healthcare providers in our area, to make sure that people have access to healthcare, because again, healthy people, healthy communities. I would also look at workforce development, and I will look at workforce development on a couple of different things. So when you're looking at what are the jobs of the future, what does it look like to be able to support our life sciences, but our blue-green jobs? So as we can, as we're starting to develop more into climate change, looking at climate change and looking at things of that nature, we need to make sure that we have enough individuals in that pipeline for HVAC plumbing and things of that nature. So continue to work with our workforce development, not only from our high schools with the CTE programs, but also looking at how do we help, how do we partner differently with our universities and our colleges in the area? I would also look at our digital, our digital device. So one of the things when you're talking about infrastructure, many times we talk about roads, we talk about streets, lighting, transit, but a lot of times, we don't have a lot of conversations about our internet and connectivity. And if we're looking at globalization and how we're connecting across the globe, we need to make sure that all of our businesses here have that opportunity to be a participant in that, because some of it have, some of the businesses have it, but a lot of them don't have strong connectivity. So that's one of the things I would continue to work on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Denise Roth, followed by Irving Allen.
You know, one of our best calling cards for economic development will be and is our ability to execute successfully. At the end of the day, we want the businesses that are coming here, and especially at this moment where we have two major efforts that are looking at us, to be able to report their experience to others in the industry. And so thinking in terms of sort of the heart of that, in terms of how we are growing people, how we are retaining our workforce, as well as people in general, as well as attracting. So if you think from those terms and blossom out from there, it's very much all the efforts that you've heard, but it bears, and it's worth repeating, in terms of, is this an exciting and energetic place to live? Are there communities in which people want to come to that they are finding attractive to relocate from where they are or to start a new life if they're young people? Are there, is there housing that they can afford at different price points, and interesting housing and attractive housing as well? Is there the capacity from an infrastructure standpoint, certainly roads, but also water and sewer, in order to meet the needs of these companies? Is there an opportunity for the suppliers and partners that they work for, work with, to grow in our community? Do they have the resources and access, both from, everything from other businesses to work with, as well as places to site? Is there a development that's available for them to get to work quickly? It's those and other aspects that we really have to focus on and double down on, and this moment is going to be truly, truly important for us to really leverage and make this moment a calling card for Greensboro.
Thank you. Irving Allen.
All right. So I will absolutely stand on many of the things that have been said up here. We do have to focus on our infrastructure. We do have to make sure that we're creating opportunities for young folks. We also have to make sure that we're involving them in the planning for creating these opportunities so that they're the opportunities that they will want to stay in. We do have to till the ground and kind of become the gardeners for those who want to come to Greensboro and plant their seeds to grow their businesses. But we also have to be an incubator for how we grow industry here in our community and how we are moving those students, from students to business owners to homeowners. We have to create that track for folks and make it clear what we want to see in this city. So we have to talk to staff. We have to talk to those that are doing the work at the Chamber of Commerce and all of our partners about creating a concise plan and a vision, and then communicating that vision to the folks that are interested in coming to the Greensboro, to the folks that are interested in growing their community. And then we have to also address education. I know that nobody on the council likes to talk about education, but I think it's the core tenet to being successful in our community, because housing determines how our schools are funded and those things. So we have to put our hand in education, look at wraparound services, how we can better support families as they're trying to build their upward mobility and grow their families in our community. How are we supporting them? How are we being a part of their household and giving them a helping hand so that they can reach the goals that they want to reach? And then we just have to, like I said, grow closer to each other, start taking steps. So I'm an advocate for building and rebuilding the Neighborhood Congress, which is a connection of neighborhood associations that will be a resource for both council and for our partners that are looking to develop things, to know the heartbeat of the community and be able to have them engaged and involved and get the resources and input that they have to offer. offer.
All right, thank you very much. I had mentioned this during the first portion with those running for district. We did give the candidates questions ahead of time, but it was a group of like 15 questions. I've got a question that I'd like to ask in both a, both a simple, but also a somewhat challenging way for you all. And ask the question first, and then I'll explain. In listening to candidates, in looking at the websites, most candidates seem to share the same four key priority areas: public safety, infrastructure, housing, and economic growth. Pretty much, generally, yeah. And then the question that I had sent you in advance is, noting that city council has to make difficult choices when allocating limited resources, which one, which one of these four priority areas is your number one? And now the simple but also challenging way of answering it. By a show of hands, which of you, and again, among the options, public safety, infrastructure? Oh, I'm sorry, let me run through them again. Sorry. I was doing a dramatic pause, and I actually lost my place on the page. I was trying to cover for that. I failed miserably, many apologies. All right, so your four choices: public safety, infrastructure, housing, economic growth. Again, those are public safety, infrastructure, housing, economic growth. If you had to pick one as your priority, which would it be? So by a show of hands, how many people would say public safety is their number one priority? Okay, thank you. How many would say infrastructure? How about housing? All right, and then finally, economic growth. And let the record reflect, we did not have any abstentions, and I did not, I did not see anyone not vote, or not vote, I didn't see anyone vote more than once. So thank you for that. I know that was a simple hand raise, but also a bit of a challenge for you to pick. Thank you for that. Final question that I've got. Recent economic development wins can be traced back to commitments made by Greensboro leaders over a decade ago, followed by many years of hard, patient work. For Greensboro to be successful, our city council needs to address immediate challenges while also considering the next five, 10, and even 50 years for Greensboro. So voters know that you can help deliver Greensboro future. Please share with us an example from your life when you committed yourself to a project or an idea that took longer than five years to accomplish. Again, the question, so that we know you're up to it, can you share an example with us from your life when you made a commitment to an idea or a project that took more than five years to accomplish? Can I get an "whoa" from the audience? Thank you. All right. We started with mayor last time, so I'm going to start with at-large. I see one person shaking a head. No, no, not at-large. And we're going to start with Irving Allen, followed by Jamila Pender.
So I'm a fan of long commitments. I have famously done a lot of long-term projects as a community organizer here, and I've done a lot of long-term projects, working with some of the council members that are up here and some of the folks that have worked in community. And I think that if I had to pick one, it would be working with the G.C. Jack, and that's something that I have continued, the Greensboro, the Greensboro Criminal Advisory Commission. And that is a commission that I was commissioned and appointed by the council to help create, and also to revamp these Police Citizens Review Board for the city of Greensboro. And it's work that has gone unfinished and that I would like to continue doing. I was appointed in 2018 to start doing that work, and we did get the G.C. Jack up and running. However, it is not running to the point where it can adequately do what it has been tasked to do. And so it hasn't been operating correctly, because we look at the complaint processes that come from the community about the police department, and then we look at trends, and we make recommendations of those trends. I'm speaking as if I'm still on the board, I'm not. But we do make recommendations, they do make recommendations for those trends, and it's something that is operating today, and it's something that I've also been a part of, advocating in community to strengthen that board and to make sure that it has all of the tools that it needs to be able to perform its functions. And I'll tell you what's so important about that board is, there is a divide in trust between the community and our police department, and the only way to bridge that gap is to have those hard conversations and to make sure that we're doing the work, both in the community and in our department, along with the council, to be, to make sure that we're bridging that gap and building that trust.
All right, thank you. Next, Jamila Pender, followed by Richard Beard. Again, the question, an example from your life when you committed yourself to a project or an idea that took longer than five years to accomplish?
I have spent over 25 years working in healthcare, and working in healthcare, where intimately being on the ground with seeing what are the issues that, the life issues that challenge people. And one of the things I used to sit in some of my roles in my former job with the health system was, oh my gosh, why are so many people coming to the emergency room, or why are so many people going to the urgent care, or why are so many people going to the doctor's office for certain things? And I would see this data, because I'm really big on data, and I'd see the numbers, and I'm just like, there's something about this. And I would see the numbers, and I hate to say it, because I just don't like to say people are less than or communities are less than, but it would be in this one area, which we have continual concentration of individuals that were coming into the health system. And I said, only if I could do this, only if I could do this. And today to sit, and that was my goal, was like, only if I could get in here and kind of figure out and tinker out, tinker around and say, hey, if we just had medical practices here, or what if we did a grocery store here, or what if we did this, or work on transportation here? And it all starts with the seed, planting a seed, and watering the seed, and then, you know, cultivating that plant, what happens. And today to sit back, and it might just, just, just emotional part of me, but to sit back today and to see the investment, because I didn't give up and constantly said, this is where we should invest, and to see where we have medical facilities in East Greensboro that I was part of opening up off of Phillips Avenue, to see how we have an investment off of Gate City Boulevard where we have a Noco Chavis partnership, to be able to see how we're in parks and rec and looking at non-traditional ways to be able to bring healthcare to the community, the way the community wants to be able to see it. And it all started with, why is this happening? What do we need to do? And today to see the fruit of that, to me, is just like, that five years was worth it. And to be able, and be able to see it, an additional 10 or 15 years will be amazing. So that's my, that's my project.
All right, thank you. Next, Richard Beard, followed by Denise Roth.
What a great question. And at first, I was like, hmm, what am I going to talk about? But then one really popped in my head, and I talked about my career and economic development, and then in 2006, had a crazy idea to go to two good friends, Brett Shulman and Sam Simpson, and had a great idea of going and purchasing the remaining acres at Rock Creek Center, the largest industrial park in the Piedmont triad. There were 682 acres left. We didn't have a penny to our names, but found some local investors to invest in it in 2006, and then 2008 hit, and everything came to a screeching halt. And we had built the only industrial spec building in town, 272,000 square feet, that sat empty for four years. But fortunately, we had some very patient investors here locally, but from 2008 to 2012, nothing was happening. 2018, some of our investors wanted to fire sale it, and we kind of pushed back on that, and fortunately, we found an investor, Taylor Williams, Williams Development. Fast forward to today, that park's almost built out, and like I said, over a billion dollars' worth of tax base and over 5,000 jobs, and most recently, a huge announcement with Lenovo, which I'm very proud to be a part of attracting that to Rock Creek Center. That was a tough time, and without having a lot of patience and a lot of sleepless nights and a lot of tears, but we got out of it, and fortunately, I was able to retire from real estate and do what I'm passionate about, and that's giving back to this community and being involved in sports tourism, which is still economic development.
All right, thank you. Denise Roth, followed by Hugh Holston.
At the risk of sounding as if I'm pandering, the truth of the matter has been Greensboro. So I've been working with cities and municipalities and growth and transformation for cities for my entire career, whether I was at the federal level or local. I was looking for opportunities to bring that forth. And 20 years of that experience, minus a few years there, has been in Greensboro. And it afforded me the opportunity to live through a number of projects. So when I was working for the congressman, I covered from Raleigh to Rockyham County, and really was excited about what was happening and transforming here on the ground in Greensboro. And so when I saw the opportunity to go to the chamber, I took that, and we were working on exciting things, everything from the downtown urban loop to the concept of a megasite that hadn't actually had funding yet, but was an idea that was germinating, to the Joint School of Nanoscience and Nanoengineering. Going to the city of Greensboro, I was able to pick that work up and continue to support the funding of those efforts, as well as the development and concept building, as well as community investment and engagement, as well as bringing Cultural Arts Center to further, further its steps, as well as the concept and foundational setting for the Tanger Center, as well as the future of what would then become the megasite, as well as the funding for the 840 and the other roads connected to that, and the investment in concepts for the airport and growth there, as well as the sustainability of the manager's office. I actually am proud to say that I appointed the last two managers before the current one. So at the end of the day, the work of what does this city look like, how it transforms, where it is today, I feel that my fingerprints are on it, and I can look around this city and be proud of that work. And it's my honor to run for office today and be with you and have this opportunity.
All right, thank you. Hugh Holston.
Thank you. And Ryan, I'm going to presume that I can't include my marriage of 42 years in this country.
Yeah, I actually spoke with someone before. It's telling of someone's personality, how they choose to answer the question.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
In all sincerity, I'm going to tie in the previous question where we did the hand-raising, where I said that economic development was my number one priority. When I first joined council in '21, I want you to know that the police, the minimum salary for our police officers was $39,000 per year. We've worked, I've worked to get that number up to $60,000 per year. At the same time, when I joined council in '21, the minimum pay for our standard workers, solid waste, water resources, was $15 per hour. I have worked, and I have promoted, and I have advocated to get that number to where it currently is at $20 an hour. But like before, we don't rest on our laurels. Those same employees who are earning the $20 an hour were the same employees during COVID, the 15 and $20 an hour were the same employees during COVID, that when we were at home, warm and safe, they were out in the streets as essential workers. My drive, my commitment, is the drive for '25 now. They deserve it, they've earned it, and I'm going to keep advocating for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. For the mayoral candidates, the same question, I'm going to read it, just to refresh everyone's recollection. Recent economic development wins can be traced back to commitments made by Greensboro leaders over a decade ago, followed by many years of hard, patient work. For Greensboro to be successful, our city council needs to address immediate challenges while also considering the next five, 10, and even 50 years for Greensboro. So voters know that you can help deliver Greensboro's future. Please share with us an example from your life when you committed yourself to a project or idea that took longer than five years to accomplish. And we'll first hear from Robbie Perkins.
Yeah, thank you for this question. You know, I'm an old runner. Back in my young days, I ran everything from the mile to the marathon, and I ran all over the country and in Europe and competed for the United States seven or eight times. So I don't give up. And I can tell you, there are three things that I've done over a period of time in my government service. One, the 200 million or so of public-private partnerships that we built housing in East Greensboro. The second, the Greensboro Aquatic Center, where we failed to get anything off the ground. We failed to get anything off the ground, and we delivered at the Greensboro Coliseum, finally, with the Greensboro Aquatic Center in 2009, a long time ago. 2009 is when we did that. And the third is getting the Tanger Center going, because we failed to deliver at the Coliseum several times. So those are three major projects that you have to ask yourself, what would Greensboro be like without that? But then I thought of a fourth one, because in my private sector business, I recruited Topgolf for seven years before we landed them in Greensboro, North Carolina, out on Wendover Avenue, and that's part of this, that's part of my success. I am able to be a leader that connects people and make things happen. I don't buy into the concept that city council members can't be true leaders. I want nine leaders on this city council. I want, I want, I want to make sure that all nine of us can come up with wonderful ways to make this city better. I might be the mayor, I might be the chair of the board of the city council, but I want all of my colleagues to step up and make good things happen. That's the only way this city gets better. The mayor's got one vote, just like everybody else does. You need five, six, seven to make good things happen.
All right, thank you. Mary Kay Booze-Water.
Thank you, and thank you for this opportunity. You know, you think about what you're most passionate about, and one thing I am passionate about is public safety. And I always say, and I mean it, if we don't have a safe city, we aren't going to have these economic wins. We aren't going to have these companies knocking at our door. And one thing that I have done personally in public safety, actually, there are two, but I'm going to go back just a little bit. I was brought in many, many years ago when there was talk about a one-stop shop for those experiencing domestic violence, elder abuse, you know, any type of form of violence. And I was brought into that, actually, in the discussions prior to being elected to council. And I was brought into those discussions as someone who could listen and collaborate with others. There were county officials in there, there were state officials in there. So when I was elected to council, I was given the charge to continue that, and as an executive charter member of the Family Justice Center, I am most proud of working with that for the long five, six, seven years. We discussed it, we collaborated, we had major disagreements at times, but we came into something very, very successful. I did not know until I was well into my 40s and 50s that my mother had been a victim of domestic violence. And therefore, I became even more passionate about doing this. And luckily, on 2015, it opened, and I'm telling you what, that is one of my proudest moments, that we have seen over 100,000 clients in the Family Justice Center, and it took many, many years to get to that point, and my time is up, but thank you all so much.
All right, thank you. Your time is up, and everyone's time is up. This is the end of our time. Audience, please join me. Let's give him a round of applause.[1775.21][1775.21](APPLAUSE). As I mentioned earlier, it takes a lot to put yourself up, up for office, and regardless of how things turn out, thank you all for your, for your commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Everyone, have a good evening.